With the Home Builders Association of Metropolitan Portland. It's a pleasure to have all of you join us today for a joint event that we're hosting with the Beaverton area, Greater Area Chamber of Commerce. For those of you who don't know, the Home Builders Association of Metropolitan Portland is a trade organization. We represent 800 members who work in the residential development community in and around the greater Portland region. So, thank you again for joining us today, and I'm going to turn it over to my co-host, Lorraine.
Thank you Ezra, and thanks to all of you for recognizing how important it is to get informed and be a part of getting decisions made moving forward with our county and what's happening here in our very topsy-turvy world right now. Thanks for being here. The Beaverton Chamber of Commerce is Oregon's only inclusive Chamber of Commerce in the state. We have over 6,600 members. Those are folks with business licenses in our city. And then we have about 635 higher-level investing partners. We believe the voice of business and advocacy is our most important role, and we're thrilled today to have Nina Carlson of Northwest Natural as not only our sponsor, but hosting and facilitating. And it's my privilege to introduce her to all of you if you do not know her. Nina Carlson began working her career with the City of Hillsborough in their building department. And after graduating from the University of Washington, she received a real estate license and began selling homes for the family, building and development business. Her career has expanded representing several builders, managing multiple new construction neighborhoods, and marketing and client relations. She's been on the Budget Committee for the Hillsborough School District for the past six years, no easy job, and the past three years as a Board of Director at Rivermark Community Credit Union, as well as many other nonprofit boards. She's on the Chamber, Beaverton Chamber, and I believe Hillsborough Chamber's public policy and business advocacy committees as well. She currently works for Northwest Natural as their government and community affairs liaison for the metro region, and serves as a member of various economic development organizations, including Clackamas County Business Alliance. Welcome Nina, and thank you so much for being here today.
Well, hello there, and welcome to our candidate for Washington County District One position. I wanted to first of all thank both Lorraine and Ezra, the Beaverton Chamber and the Home Builders Association for putting this forum together. These are challenging times, and without work of the home builders in Beaverton Chamber, we wouldn't be able to hear from our candidates as effectively and efficiently as we will today. So, before I kick off, I just want to say on behalf of Northwest Natural, we're a 161-year-old company, and in times of change, we're excited to announce that we are in a process of change ourself. We are looking to become the nation's first renewable natural gas company, and you'll be hearing more about that as we go along over the next few years. But without further ado, I just wanted to say thank you guys for joining us. The forum today, how we will work it is we'll have some brief introductions of our candidates, then we'll ask them a series of questions. Each candidate will have about two minutes to go ahead and answer the question. The one who answered first will get about a one-minute rebuttal if they wish, and then we'll switch back and forth. As we go along, you're welcome to put other questions that you might have in the chat, and if we get through the questions that we have here, we'll go ahead and add those as well. So, thank you for joining us, and with that, I'm going to introduce both Jeffrey Hindley and Nafisa Fai, who are running for the District One position for Washington County Commission. Nafisa Fai is a 22-year resident of Oregon, and she spent the majority of her career working in public health, beginning with the Red Cross, where she led, and she led Chronic Disease Prevention Program countywide. Additionally, she owns a small business in Beaverton focused on helping nonprofits and other public sector clients expand their businesses. Her experience growing up as a refugee has led her to found the Pan African Festival, which celebrates cultural and economic vitality. She currently serves on the Water Services Advisory Committee and the Washington County Museum Board. She lives in Aloha with her husband and three children. And Jeffrey Hindley, virtually a lifelong resident of Beaverton, son of a machinist and an Intel fab worker. He has a master's within organizational leadership from Normal University, and he's currently in the graduate certificate program for University of Virginia because he says that he has a passion for learning. He's worked for county government over 20 years, with the last 10 as an administrator in youth and criminal justice, criminal justice and mental health fields. He's a strong believer in community service, coaching basketball, teaching classes at church, and he currently serves on Washington County's Homeless Plan Advisory Committee and the Rural Roads Maintenance Advisory Committee. He's married to his wife, a registered RN, for over 26 years, and they have two sons who are Hill High graduates, with one recently graduating from University of Oregon. Thank you too for joining us and for stepping up to serve. And with that, we will start with candidate introductions, and I'll start with Nafisa.
Thank you, Lorraine, and the Beaverton Chamber of Commerce. Thank you Ezra, and the HBA for giving us this opportunity to get our messages across and reach critical mass. Thank you Nina for facilitating this forum. I'm excited to hear some of the questions that you have planned for us. My name is Nafisa Fai, and I'm running to be the next Washington County Commissioner of District One. District One covers Beaverton, Aloha, Cooper Mountain, and Greathville. Yes, when I'm elected, I will be the first woman of color to be on the commission, on the Board of Commissioners in Washington County, one of the most diverse counties in Oregon. This is a county that was founded in the early 1800s, long before even Oregon was incorporated into the Union. And to add to that complexity, the majority of the diversity in Washington County is also concentrated in District One. This community is ready for new perspective and is ready for new change. I am really the poster child for pulling yourself up by the boot strap, and I'm not the only one. My family is too. My brother, as soon as we arrived in America, I think in two weeks, he was able to get a job with Nike and worked really hard because he had aspirations and dreams of not only becoming a truck driver, but also owning his own trucks. He also had another dream of owning his own business, of restaurant business, to introduce his culture to the larger Oregonians through food, all of which he was able to accomplish through hard work. My cousin, who also came to America with zero English, just like myself, was able to put herself through education, through medical school, and become an nephrologist, kidney specialist doctor, who saved many lives and continues to save lives. As for me, when I was a little girl in the refugee camp, I dreamed of when I come to America, because there was never if, because when you're desperate and to stay alive, hope is all you have. So, when I come to America, my dream was to work for the UN or the Red Cross. When I got my first degree, I wanted to go to work for those two organizations. UN unfortunately was in San Francisco, and my mom, I couldn't convince my mom to let me move to San Francisco. So, I was able to look into Red Cross and come to find out, American Red Cross, the headquarters, was actually two blocks of the low-income housing that we were living in, in Northeast. And I'm not talking about Northeast today, I'm talking about Northeast in 1997. Was able to put together, you know, to work hard, to persevere, and succeed. I worked for American Red Cross for nine years, and after nine years, I decided that I wanted to trade my white lab coat and blue gloves and blue face shield to Nike sneakers, so to say, and be boots on the ground and contribute to the community differently. I went on to work for local county health department in public health roles, various roles, and I was actually on the response team for 2003, 2013, when we had the MERS outbreak. So, this is in my first rodeo of dealing with a pandemic, and I'm excited that I will be the only county commissioner to bring, you know, public health experience and background to the commission, which, you know, not only am I the only candidate with that experience, but I will be bringing that to the commission. In addition to that, I'm also a small business owner, and would be bringing that voice to the commission as well. I know what it's like to start your own business. I know many of the hurdles that we have to jump over to start your own business. I know struggle when I see one, and I know poverty because I lived through it. My top priorities as you county commissioners will be tackling the affordable housing prices that we have in our nation. It's really a nationwide, not just special to Oregon and special to Washington County. I want to make sure that we, you know, tackle the poverty level and really address and level the playing field for everyone when it comes to poverty. And I lived, I'm bringing that with my own lived experience. I lived in a low-income housing, and I now own my own house. I know what it's like to live in low income and go through the homeownership process.
Thank you, Nafisa. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but we got to keep on a pretty tight schedule here, and I appreciate your comments. We'll look to hear a little bit more.
That's fine.
Jeffrey, we'd like to hear from your introductory statement, please.
Thank you Nina. I also want to thank the HBA and the Beaverton Chamber, two organizations I very much respect. And I wish we were doing this in auditorium of hundreds of people. I'd much rather be doing this in person, but this is kind of the time we live in right now, and so the opportunity is a really good one, and I do appreciate that. And me and Nafisa have done this many times, and I hope there's going to be a few more of those before November. You know, your introduction covered a lot of the basics, so you know, I grew up here in Beaverton, I graduated in Beaverton High School somewhere in the mid 80s, we'll leave it at that. I don't want to date myself too much, if I might have just done that. You know, when I was probably maybe 19 or 20, I started really having a thought about helping professions. I was going to college, and I wanted to be a psychologist and help people with their problems, and I kind of became more interested in sociology after that. And I was a suicide counselor hotline on the phone for a couple of years. I really enjoyed that. And then, you know, one day, I kind of just needed a job because, well, a little different than Nafisa, but in our own way, you know, me and my wife have struggled. We've used public assistance to survive when we first had our first child. And I just needed work, and I loved working with kids, and so I stumbled into public service, working in juvenile corrections with juvenile population, and then moved over into mental health, working with at-risk youth and their families who were also struggling in a lot of ways with that population. And the first 10 or 12 years, you know, I never really thought of what I was doing as public service, but I just enjoyed helping. And then when I got into administration, I started to see public servant and politics from a different standpoint. And I think for a lot of people like myself, you start to see things in politics that you don't like and things you do like, and you have a choice to either complain a lot or be part of the solution. And a lot of things transpired to get me to the point where I was prepared to run for public office, such as my brother-in-law, who suffers from a chronic mental illness and homelessness, and lives with me and my wife currently, because the system itself is very complex, and to navigate it is really difficult, even for someone like me and my wife who have some knowledge in that area. That prompted me to get on the HPAIC board for Washington County, and I kind of started to see how broad and complex the problem was. Same with affordable housing and some other issues, and I, some things cleared up, and I felt like it was a very opportune time for me to join the fray, so to speak, and ironically, in a district that I grew up in and I love, and I've seen a lot of changes. You know, I joke with some of my older friends that, you know, I was around here even when there was no Roy Rogers Road, there was no Murray Hill, those were just fields that I used to get lost in walking around as a teenager, and I've seen a lot of good change. I've also seen some not good change, and I bring a really pragmatic, common sense approach to government, one that's, I think, fiscally very prudent, and one that uses a lot of data and research to make informed decisions rather than politics and emotions. And I think we need a little more of that in government frankly right now, and I'm happy to bring that to the board. And I tell citizens all the time, at the minimum, what you're going to get from me is a pretty fierce advocate to remove barriers for folks, because that's what happened for me, that's what helped me and my family, and I think that is one of government's role, is to remove barriers so everybody can participate in the same success and equality that we all want and have experienced. And I'm looking forward to bringing that to the county commission.
Thank you Jeff. We'll go ahead and start with you for the first question. You kind of touched on this, but you can elaborate a little bit. What inspired you to run for office, and what excites you about running for this particular office?
Yeah, so a little more detail. I, you know, when I first got into administration, I came to realize very quickly that leaders are not born, like some people say. It requires a lot of time and training, trial and error, and I took leadership very seriously because I realized when I became a manager that I really didn't know what I was doing. So, I really spent years training, teaching, practicing, mentoring my employees to learn how to be a better leader. I ended up becoming so enamored with it that I started teaching ethics to public service employees, because I'm a big believer in ethics, and I think we should hold our leaders to a very high standard, and I expect that of myself, I expect that of others. And I saw a lot of that in government that I didn't like, and I believed I was somebody that was idealistic enough and confident enough to make change, and a lot of people tell me, you can't change a system. I don't believe that, I think you can change a system. At the minimum, they're going to see a very steady, morally consistent person who listens and who provides a lot of data and research to solving problems that are very complex. And I've worked with people for so many years in government, even people I don't agree with, and I like the challenge of that. I'm a relationship guy, and I like the challenge of that, and there's nobody in 20 years that can say they've had a bad relationship with me, and I believe this is just the higher calling to impact your community, and I'm prepared to do that with a lot of experience, and I'm excited for that.
Thank you. Nafisa, do you want, and would you like me to repeat the question just in case? What inspired you for you to run for office, and what excites you about running for this office in particular?
I'm excited, the coalition building experience and the value-driven county commissioner that I will be, that I will bring to this job. I'm also excited to bring lens that haven't been explored in Washington County, public health being one of them. So, I'm really excited to bring my own, like, lived experience of many years being in public health, boots on the ground, contributing meaningfully to the community and being really active. I'm a community organizer, so for years, I've been working in the community myself and really contributing. I sit on the Clean Water Services Advisory Commission representing District One. I also sit on the Maternal Mortality Review, Morbidity Review Committee, appointed by Governor Kate Brown. I'm really driven, those might sound nerdy topics, public health, you know, all this, but I'm really driven of having a positive impact on the community, and also, you know, changing the narrative in Washington County that the communities of color and low-income communities are not part of the political conversations and debates. I think it's time that we end that, you know, end that narrative and empower and inspire people to be part of this process. You know, the narrative around Washington County all of a sudden becoming diversity is wrong and wrong, and not true narrative. Diversity has always been here since the beginning of Washington County, and I really was inspired to, you know, not only having a solid resume and experience, but the opportunity of really inspiring these communities who have been left behind to, you know, whether I win or lose, the next generation will be inspired of communities of color and low-income to say, yes, I come from poverty, yes, I come from struggle, but I worked really hard, and look where I am, where I can go. So, it's really...
Thank you again. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but I really appreciate the thoroughness of your responses.
No, Nina, I don't see a time, so maybe have in a time, and then let us know what time we have.
You have two minutes, and then if you're the first person, you can have a rebuttal or a final closing minute. Jeffrey, would you like anything further to say, or shall we just go on to the next question?
Let's get some meat and potatoes of this, yeah.
All right. So, Nafisa, I'd like to start with you this time. What do you think is working well in the county, and what would you like to see improved?
Good question. I really, I think the county, you know, I'll start with what we're dealing with. We're dealing with a pandemic, in this wake of the pandemic, I really think that Washington County could have done a lot to respond, especially the pandemic impacting the Latinx community, but I think there's a lot of good stuff that the county is doing. I'm really proud for the county passing unanimously the equity resolution. I'm really proud of the county thinking about childcare services and how to contribute in a meaningful way to parents who can't afford to stay home, because with their kids, and I'm really proud of the county thinking about ways to support small businesses in a significant way, and really thinking ahead of, say, what could we structure moving forward to continue this support for businesses and opening up that conversation? I'm also excited that the county is really seem to be on a line to center voices that are really negatively have been impacted policies that are being pushed, so I'm really excited that. And I'm excited the opportunity of massive engagement with the community and continue, you know, you know, the Black Lives Matter movement, this pandemic, it brought a lot of issues forward. The economic crisis brought a lot of issues forward for many people that have been left behind, so I'm excited the conversations and the issues that have been coming forward for the county commissioners, and I'm excited to add a value moving forward when elected and continue to support the equity resolution and continue to be a voice for small businesses.
Okay, thank you very much. Jeffrey, I'd be happy to read the question again if you'd like.
Nope, I'm good.
All right, hit it.
So, I'm going to talk about pre-COVID, because I know we're going to get a lot of COVID questions, and I think that's absolutely appropriate. Up until, let's say, February of this year, what was going good with Washington County was a lot of things frankly. We had the highest area median income, we had the second lowest poverty rate, second lowest in food insecurity, lowest crime rate of all the major counties, second of all 36 counties. These are great things, and when I started thinking about running, the question that came through my mind was, how do you make something better that's already pretty good? That's a challenge, because if things aren't going well completely, everybody can have these big, great ideas, and everybody sounds like, you know, they're going to be a magician when they get into office, but when things are going really well, how do you make it better? And, you know, the last couple of years, we've seen kind of a bit of a slide in like fiscal policy with our county. Businesses and citizens are getting hammered with taxes, fees, levies, bond measures. That's local, that's metro, that's the state. That is a finite amount of money that can be drained from these people and these businesses. We have to have some folks that are a little bit more fiscally prudent, and what that means is, from my experience in governance, you have to be able to push back and ask some questions about how we're spending money. Throwing money at a problem doesn't solve a problem. How you spend your money on a problem and what you do with that money, that determines whether you're going to be effective in solving problems or not. And I'd like to see a lot more of that. We've spent millions of dollars in the last two to three fiscal years just hiring almost 200 new employees for this county. Yet, those are $100,000 employees with benefits, that's $20 million just in employees right there. There needs to be some pushback of that, or citizens and businesses are going to continue to get hammered with that. So, for me, it's finding those little areas of like, how do we make these things better? How do we get more people into housing? How do we get more people off the streets? How do we get congestion improved? With the things we're doing now, we're doing a good job, but a more comprehensive and broader approach with experience is really what we need right now, and my positions are pretty well-established in those areas, and I think they address those problems better.
Thank you. Nafisa, you have one minute if you have anything else you'd like to add. Okay. Jeffrey, we'll go ahead and start with you. What would be your top two or three priorities as a commissioner?
Yeah, well, our COVID response is important, and so since that's where we're at right now, that has to be, I mean, if you'd asked me six months ago, my answers might have been a little different. Our COVID response needs to be a little stronger now, because of our CARES Act money that we've got, a little over $100 million now, that's being divvied out now in, I think, pretty, pretty good ways. A lot of it's being done to support our nonprofits, such as community actions, some other places that are doing a lot with rent assistance, food assistance, those are energy assistance, those are big ones, those are things I've been touting for months, that I'd really like to see us on an ongoing basis do more of that, even post-COVID, but right now, it's more important because so many people are struggling. There's been more work towards business support, which is great, because our initial response was good and quick, but it wasn't enough. A million dollars originally out of our reserves was not enough to stay the tide, in my opinion. I suggested we do probably two or three times that. This is the time that we do have reserves that we do need to spend money. I'm kind of a cheat person in general, to be honest with you, but there's a time to spend money, and there's a time to save money, and during a pandemic or a natural disaster or something like that, that's why you have healthy reserves. But you also don't get a healthy reserves unless you manage your money well along the way, so we can't keep going out and asking for more and more money, and that's kind of what I'm seeing happen in government quite a bit. So, affordable housing is the other big one. I've got a pretty comprehensive approach to that, from tiny home development to modern middle housing development, to also relaxing SDC charges and property values in certain developments. We're talking $40,000 a year, or $40,000 in SDC charges for a small home. We have to get more people into homeownership, and we can't do that with the prices around here, and SDC charges at $40,000 to $50,000 a home. We have to be able to do better in that regard. And the other one is homelessness. I've got a pretty comprehensive plan to hit different areas of homelessness. One-size-fits-all approach does not work with this problem. We have to be able to look at it a little more comprehensive and in a broader way, and my ideas are pretty, pretty well laid out in that area, and I'm sure we'll probably talk about that a little bit more later on.
Thank you. Nafisa, what would be your top two or three priorities as a commissioner?
Question, I, you know, I'm running on a platform to be an added value to affordable housing and tackle that. I also want to alleviate congestion and traffic for our district, you know, to make sure people are spending less time on the road and more time with their families, even though it's COVID, traffic looks different now. I'm also, you know, want to make sure that, two things, make sure Washington County is prosperous and inclusive and safe place for all, and as a small business owner too, I want to empower and grow small businesses, and that means, you know, I'm interested and excited to pay close attention to gain share funds, because that seems to be one of the funds that is at the discretionary of the county commissioners board. I'm interested to see and figure out how we can use some of those dollars and some of those funds to alleviate some of the economic hardship that businesses and small businesses especially are facing. So, I'm, those are my top priorities, and of course, roll up my sleeve and get really involved around the public health response on COVID, the communities that are disproportionately impacted.
All right, thank you both very much. I will let, if the person who spoke first has anything to add, you can just flag me down. If not, we're just going to keep going on. Both of you guys have talked about COVID and the economic situation that has happened in our region. COVID has particularly hit small business very, very hard. What are ways you think the county can help business navigate and recover from this economic crisis? And please be as specific as you can as to what funds that you would tap and what you think the county's role in this is. And we'll start with Nafisa.
Yeah, you really have a good question, Nina. You know, I talked about the gain share, that's a really good opportunity, good funds to tap into. I think currently, right now, Washington County boards fund those, use those dollars differently than for small businesses, so there's an opportunity to shift some of that dollars to small businesses. I think the county just started a hotline to help small business owners. I think that's a really good idea. I really think that we need to figure out what other money is out there that have been allocated to different projects to see if we can shift some of those money. You know, the, some of the missed dollars can, you know, is there a leeway? Do we have a discretionary to move some of those dollars to the small businesses? So, I'm really interested to see some of the concrete results of really helping, because people are really desperate, businesses are closing, and if you ever started a business, you know how hard and all the tears and hard work that went into and many sleep this night. So, it's really devastating to see small businesses close when we have, you know, government infrastructure and taxation mechanism in place that pull money out of residents. So, I'm excited to see how we can create pathways that redirect some funding, what that will look like. It's not a decision that I'm willing to make myself, I'm willing to engage small business owners and bring those voices and to do the work with them, because, you know, I'm just the one voice, and what I started is a consulting business, not necessarily a coffee shop or restaurant versus a tire, you know, or mechanic, so it's a little different, and I want to... And I wanna be that coalition and and voice builder and amplify those voices to see what would work for them.
Okay, thank you very much. And Jeff, COVID nineteen has hit small businesses across our region particularly hard. How do you feel that the county can help business navigate and recover from the COVID crisis? And please be specific about monies or or techniques that you think that the county commission can do to help small business in particular.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. You know, these are things I've been talking about since last September when I started, and I've got some pretty good ideas in that regard. And as some of you know, who are out there listening, the county just recently began the implementation of a Department of Economic Development. That was a long time in the making just before COVID. It's starting out as a small group that's gonna be reactive to city needs as well as county needs in urban unincorporated areas. But one of the things that I've kind of put forth is that, in addition to the current budget of that department, I'd like to see a funding stream similar to what they did with the Small Business Protection Plan that they did in response to COVID, be a permanent line item in that department so that post-COVID, and there will be a post-COVID at some point, that we have a funding stream that on a regular basis is available to help business startups, help business development, and also to help businesses who are struggling to go out of business because we don't want businesses going out of business. We wanna be able to help them. And I don't think it should just be a response because of COVID. I think that should be a permanent line item in our county department. One of my other thoughts was that we've got a lot of flex fund money, and Nafisa's right about that. The county has something called Board Priority Investments. It's flex fund money that they use to pay for certain things in their district. What I'd like to see done is use money a little bit more often for things like Hillsborough Chambers Schools to Careers Program, Community Actions, Health Careers, and PCC's Workforce Development because we can continue to train and promote and improve our upcoming workforce and our people that are basically needing to be retrained, which is what PCC's workforce does. We can provide nominal increases of supplements to these groups to help them help us work on this problem in our community. The last thing I'd probably say is that I'm interested in the county, when they develop this, to get their website up and running so we can have more economic roundtables as well as pushing community people to businesses that are struggling. So we have our own kind of marketing built into this without spending any money. But we can drive people to our site, drive them to businesses. That's what I'd like to see done.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move now on to transportation because that is a topic that we will be voting on this fall and a pressing concern for a lot of our residents. So what are your thoughts on the metro? And we'll start with Jeffrey on this one. What are your thoughts on the Metro T twenty twenty bond? What are your concerns? What do you like about it? And feel free to talk about that bond, and then we'll have another question more particular about transportation.
Yeah, well, I've been pretty honest with most groups that I've talked to since day one that I am not support of the current transportation bond. I think it needs to be taken back and reworked. I think there's some projects on it for Washington County that are good. But I don't think they're good enough, and I don't think they're gonna deal with the problem of congestion. They're kind of stop-getting measures. And I don't, I don't also want Washington County residents of whom, when I'm elected, I'm having to be a voice for, having to disproportionately pay money for projects in other counties that we may or may not even use. I, I, I think when it fails, it'll go back to metro and have to be redone better. And so I think that's the positive message. The funding stream, which is gonna be another big attack on businesses, I cannot support that. We've had two measures already this year, which are anti-business tax measures, and this one's ten times the size of the one we had in May. That's including the cat tax that passed in January. There were two last year. There's gonna be more next year. There's a finite amount of money. We can't keep punishing businesses because government wants to throw more money at a problem when, in my opinion, they're not really well thought out. Luckily, locally, we have mistip, which is why locally, we're doing a great job with our roads. But we can do a better job, and we'll probably talk about that a little bit later. But this bond measure is well-intentioned, but not really well thought out, in my opinion. And I don't like the funding stream that's anti-business. And they're already getting hammered with that, and that needs to stop. And I think metro needs to understand they need to do a better job when they roll out the next transportation package because it is important. And regionally, it's important. I understand that. But this bond measure is not going to deal with the problem properly. It's not.
Thank you. Nafisa, talk to us about what your viewpoint is on the Metro T twenty twenty bond. What do you like about it? Are there things you would change in addressing the congestion in our area?
I, I understand the concerns of the business community when they roll back. But I would say that, you know, we know that we need substantial infrastructure overall to address our transportation system needs, our transportation needs. And I think traffic and road safety are significant problems in our community. I, I, I really do agree on that part. And effect of the overall, and, you know, this really impacts the overall quality of our lives. I am support of the measure. I do think it's up to the voters, though, to make that overall decision. Critical piece of the measure is addressing the racial inequities in our transportation system because economics and other structural inequities, communities of color are more impacted negatively. So I'm really appreciative of the coalition and the engagement that they did to center and to really have an intentional eye towards equity. I will like to work with the business community on implementation if the, if the measure passes in November. There is a lot of work that has been done to remedy the inequities of transportation. But I ultimately do understand the concerns of the business community, and they've made a compelling argument of why this is really a bad timing and bad idea right now. That's why it's important for the voters to really make that ultimate decision. And I will be there as a county commissioner to help with the implementation plan.
Nina, can I say one thing super quick?
Sure, you, you bet.
Yeah, no, and I, I agree with Nafisa that those are important issues, but I, I also wanna remind people out there listening that my job as a commissioner would be first and foremost to represent Washington County. That has to be my priority. And right now, we already have multiple funding streams that are dedicated towards safety improvements, sidewalk improvements, pedestrian improvements for folks who work and live locally to the tune of millions. And that's not even part of just mistip money, which twenty-five percent of that money has to go to those projects as part of new developments and new road development. So we're already doing a pretty good job of that. We could probably do a little bit more, but we already have funding available. And that's happening every year. So that's, that's already happening. That's, that's my concern is that we're paying, we're paying an amount to do that in other counties. And I don't think that that's necessarily our responsibility. We're talking about regional transportation. That's a little different. But these projects are being done to a very high, high degree of success in Washington County right now.
All right. Thank you very much. This, we'll now move on to some housing questions, and we'll start with Nafisa. What do you see as the greatest drivers behind housing costs? And what steps should we take to ensure that the next generation of Oregonians can afford to live in the Portland metro region, most importantly, in Washington County?
I really think that the cost of any development that finishes should be relevant to the local situation. The socioeconomic status of that community should be reflected. It's really strange to have houses that are done, but the community that live in that area cannot afford. I think if you have a working family, you know, working class communities, it's really interesting to have eight hundred thousand dollar houses. So I think, you know, I always share my experience when it comes to affordable housing. And this is the, you know, I'm not a home builder. I wanna work with the Home Builders Association to make the right decision when it comes to the right path to take towards. Because I'm a public health background, I'm not a home builder. So I wanna engage people who have the most, who live and breathe this topic to be the ones that are driving and guiding this policy solution. With that said, I really think that we need to make sure and include equity lent in future development planning. I think we need to center what the ultimate cost will be for an average American citizen like myself. So I think we need to think that and center that and and figure out what does that mean? You know, does that mean we need to come up with or or implement different tools that are best practices in different cities or different counties? I'm open to all of that questions and 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 conversations. But really, we need to make sure that we are building houses that are affordable. So housing affordability is really a big, big topic and priority that I wanna push forward. And it ultimately comes down to what is the cost? And the cost is driven by what we put on the developers to take on, right? So if they spent, you know, spend so much, they have to make their money. So could we embed equity lens in, you know, before so that the houses are realistically priced and they can be occupied immediately?
Thank you very much. Jeffrey, so what, what would you, what are your thoughts on the house, on housing? And how we can keep it affordable for Oregonians to live in our region and importantly, Washington County?
Yeah, another real broad problem that I think requires a variety of interventions, so to speak, to, to really take a stab at it. You know, what I've been proposing for a long time is that the reality is supply and demand. I only got a C in economics in college, so I'm not an expert in economist. But I do understand the first rule, which is supply and demand. We need more space and we need more inventory because lack of inventory and lack of space drives prices up. That's just a natural market issue that you can't control unless you find more space to build. So most people that know me know that I'm kind of pro-development. I think that cities need to continue to encourage metro and to apply to get the UGB relaxed in some of their areas. But I'm also pro-thoughtful development. I don't want a concrete jungle. I love our natural resources. I love trees. I used to climb trees as a kid. I lived in a neighborhood that had trees. I love that. We can do that safely, but we do need more space to build. That's just a reality. I've been pitching a tiny home community and modern middle housing for a year now. And we're way behind the rest of the country in these kind of developments, and we need to get on board with that. These are very affordable. People want them. They're able to buy them for very cheap. And the other part is, we need to get more people into single-family homes. And Nafisa's right, we can't rely on subsidized housing forever. We wanna get people into building wealth through equity. We want them in homes. I have builder friends of mine who said they can build a two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home if they didn't have to pay forty five thousand dollars in SDC charges and a hundred thousand dollars for an eighth of an acre. Like, you can't do that. But you can do that if those things are relaxed. We'll have to swallow some cost on that, but we also can save money in other areas to pay for that. We need smaller, single-family homes that are affordable, that everybody has access to. And we need to make sure those are diverse communities and that everybody has equal access to that. I completely agree with that. We can do it, but we have to do a better job at the county level to mitigate those costs because it's impossible to do it otherwise. No matter who, anybody tells you different, that is inaccurate.
Thank you. Nafisa, do you have anything to add there?
You know, the costing of, the, the, the cost of the houses are really big barriers. I wanna make clear of that. And let people know, you know, people will, everybody, we wanna make sure that, I think, the ultimate idea and goal for any county elected official or any elected official really champion affordable housing or housing affordability, it's really to center, how do we uplift people out of poverty? And one way to do that is to make sure people can own their own house. And if, so I really wanna advocate costing or cost-effective houses. I lived in Lake Oswego, you know, before Washington County. I think everybody, most people know that. Beautiful city. I lived in Mountain Park, but my mom got dementia and we needed a bigger space for her. And we were, you know, we couldn't afford Mountain Park. And that's how we were able to make Washington County our own home and and breathe and live and have kids here, contribute, start a business. So I think everybody wants to do that. What we're missing is really centering the folks that we are championing for. And that is uplifting people out of poverty and make sure that home, they can own their own home. You're shaking your head.
That's kind of my sign. Like, when you see the head move, you know you're getting down there. All right. Well, I appreciate that. The housing is a very complex issue. We happen to live in an area of great natural beauty with a lot of natural resources and developable farmland around us. Nafisa, I'd like you to kick us off on talking about how you would preserve that balance between our natural areas and our farmland and our housing needs. And even in development, perhaps how you would protect trees to make sure we have good tree canopy while still making sure that we have developable land. It's an easy problem. I'm sure you've got this.
Not really. You know, I learned through a presentation through our CPOs and our, and of course, I sit on the Clean Water Services Advisory Commission. So we hear a lot of, some of this, not necessarily supply and demand kind of conversation, which is what your question is alluding to. But really making sure that I, one of the things I learned, I'll say that, is that trees are actually not really protected here in Oregon. There isn't really like a stronger. But, so anyway, what I would do is, yes, we do need to address the supply and demand issue. And if that is a real issue, I think we need to engage really a broad coalition of communities to come together and expertise. Folks who are for expanding the UGB areas and folks who are against it and really come up with a solid compromise that really contributes to this idea of uplifting people out of poverty and making sure people can own their own house. Now, there is a different, you know, idea around density that's being pushed. And I think the HB two thousand one bill, the House Bill, the House Bill two thousand one that got passed was also recommending this new innovative idea of middle housing. So I think there's a really, before we even have that really hard, solid conversation of let's clear out more land so we can build, I think we need to be thoughtful and come together. Everyone that has a stake in this issue, come together and address the, you know, what is the root cause of this problem? And how do we, you know, where can we meet the demands and what can we do to, to address this problem? And if that leads to majority of consensus to expand the UGB, then consensus always wins.
All right. Thank you very much. Jeffrey, how would you preserve, balance the natural preservation houses and the need for housing, affordable housing? And especially even in developments, what about the tree canopy and how we treat our open spaces in the urban growth boundary?
Yeah, well, there's, you know, there's a, there's an SNR document with the county, Significant Natural Resources, which is what's supposed to guide development that's watched over by metro as well as the county. That's going under some modification right now because of some perceived problems in that area. And as I said earlier, and I agree with Nafisa in this, that I, I do think development is important, but it needs to be smart development and thoughtful development. I like mature trees. I like those kind of things. I believe builders can, can deal with that if they're required to. That's just kind of the reality. That's where, that's where they have to play with the government a little bit. When we kind of demand this of our new development, they have to be able to comply to that. And I know that like the HBA, Portland Builders Association as well, they have lists of green builders who want to and have already built in these kind of developments and want to continue these kind of developments. And we should strongly encourage that through our RFP processes, through our own recruitment of builders in this county to get those kind of green builders in our community, along with all other builders who themselves have a philosophical desire to maintain natural beauty and resources. And I think when we recruit more of those folks to be building in our community, we're gonna, they're not even gonna have to follow a code as much as they're, their own philosophy is gonna dictate that they're gonna maintain the beauty and purity you like. Because we have this urban world divided in Washington County that's a little bit unique, and I do think we need to protect that. We can grow into that a little bit, but do it responsibly. And I think all those things are gonna work to that end as well as our community development code, which is gonna be updated with the new SNR report. It's gonna provide some safeties and protections to that, that frankly, developers and builders are gonna have to follow, and I, I support that.
Thank you very much. We'll go on to one more tough question that is pretty topical right now. We'll start with you, Jeffrey. Racial equity and police reform are issues elected officials are currently wrangling with. What would, what policies or reforms would you like to, to address and and to deal with these issues?
Yeah, well, there's a lot of conversations going on at the county right now, as we all know, with the sheriff department as well as local law. Yeah, well, there's a lot of conversations going out the county right now, as we all know, uh, with the sheriff department as well as local law enforcement are having um, uh, conversations with a lot of community groups, which is a start in the right direction. Uh, because it's important that everybody just kind of listens to what people's experiences are, because we've all had different experiences in that regard. Uh, and I'm, I'm open to listening to that. Uh, when I hear defund talk, I'm always taken back a little bit. I want to be careful because that's subjective and I don't know what that means. That means different things to different people. Um, I'll tell you that probably right now, I, I would, I normally say everything is prior to COVID, but I think even right now, we could probably say that um, Washington County enjoys the lowest crime rate of any major county in the entire state. There's a reason for that because primarily our law enforcement agencies do a fantastically good job. Three point two percent crime rate is extremely low and out of all thirty-six counties, we're number two in the entire state. I don't think anyone's going to raise their hand and say they want to see that going backwards in any way, right? Uh, low crime is one of the livability factors for our entire community and everybody benefits from that. What I do think public officials need to be open to, as well as our sheriff, and I've talked to him about this directly, is be open to that kind of dialogue and if reform is, is good for the community, safe for citizens and officers, we all should be open to looking at how we do practices better and safer. And I think he needs to do that and I, as a commissioner, would do that. Uh, I support that completely. We should always be looking at reform and how we can do things better. Uh, no problem with that. I completely agree with that.
Thank you very much. Uh, Nafisa, uh, racial equity and police reform are issues that elected officials are currently wrangling with. Uh, what, what policies would you like to enact to address some of these issues and any other thoughts you have around the matter?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to revisit and, you know, to sort of borrow some phrases that are being out in the media to reimagine public safety. I think public safety needs to be what it is, safety between the public and the law enforcement. Uh, so I really am um, excited to think about how we can reimagine public safety and what that looks like. The reality right now is that communities of color do not feel safe with law enforcement. So how do we create that? I live in an unincorporated areas of Washington County and the only public safety and law enforcement that I have is the sheriff's office. So there's no way I'm advocating uh, to get rid of my, the only safety that I have in case of anything that happens to me, God forbid. Uh, so there, there, you know, people care about their safety and that safety is attached to law enforcement. Uh, but I think what the conversation should be is, is to think about, you know, what we can invest, what services that add value to law enforcement and their jobs. What can we invest? Mental health and addiction services, you know, and we, uh, and the defunding idea, you know, in Oregon, we've been defunding education, we've been defunding uh, and to actually bring it down to local level, uh, uh, public health services for decades. So I think what we need to have the conversation be is what can we invest? And how do we get in communities involved? And what are the innovative ways the community and the public safety can work together? You know, I think I'm, I'm a big advocate of de-escalation uh, tactics uh, to when there is a situation and the law enforcement is um, responding. Uh, I went through the, so I went through the uh, Citizen Academy of Portland Police. Uh, so I have that through the background and understanding, uh, but I also am a black woman uh, who's physically diverse. So I care about my safety and I care about the safety of my children. I have three boys. And if, uh, and if what the media is saying perception is everything, our safety is in danger. So I want to work with the law enforcement and really have that, you know, courageous conversation of what we can do to heal together as a community.
Thank you very much. Um, this next one, we're going to move from uh, issues to maybe a little bit more about you and how you uh, approach uh, the job as, as a commissioner. Um, we'll start with you, Nafisa. Would you tell us a little bit about your leadership and conflict resolution styles?
Good question. Um, my leadership style is a coalition builder. Um, one that really um, makes sure that there are many voices adding on to whatever decision that we're making. Really consensus builder, uh, an organizer and a really thoughtful leader. You know, I come from a communities who've been left behind. I have no intention of leaving anybody behind, whatever the issues. And I have no problem of saying that this isn't my topic, let's bring the experts in. So those are, that's my leadership style and I've worked on two pandemics now. And that's the leadership that really added values to any projects and any reputation and any uh, work um, that I have done. So that's a leadership, the, the leadership type and I will bring. And you know, as I said earlier, uh, I can't really recommend one thing for our law enforcement and not practice myself in terms of conflict resolution. You know, I was suggesting de-escalation. I, I really value peace uh, and harmony and treating everyone with respect and dignity. So that, that's how I would uh, really go about conflicts is preserving everyone's respect and dignity and then addressing what the issue is. Uh, if we are going to vote no on an issue that is going to upset a large community, we still need to preserve the and respect the communities and their own lived experience and the advocacy they did for that issue. And then continue to work with that community to say, although we may have not agreed on this, let's work together and revisit this issue and how can we work together the next issue? So those are how I will deal with conflict. Um, and um, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Jeffrey, tell us about your leadership and conflict resolution styles.
Well, conflict resolution is an interesting topic because since I work in criminal justice, uh, I've trained in conflict resolution for twenty years. And I have to use it almost, I've used it today as an example. I actually came here from work and, you know, when you get kind of some, let's say recalcitrant kiddos, uh, you have to be very skilled in that regard. And uh, it, it, and to be honest and just a little bit humorous, um, adults often act like children too. And politicians often act like children. Let's just be real about that. The conflict resolution skills you use with kids works the same with adults. And that is a few things. You stay relaxed, you be respectful, you listen. You use always a lower tone than everybody else in the room is doing, so they have to strain to hear you and it kind of calms them down a little bit and you kind of go, what are we doing here? I mean, come on, we, we, solving public policy problems, I, I think we have different ways to go about doing it, but the goals are usually the same. And you have to have some experience in bringing people to some consensus and going, what is our common goal here? And we differ in some ways, but what can we agree on? I've done that for twenty-some years with really complicated teams of people and uh, always with usually the less power in the room than anybody. And I usually can sometimes get people to my way of thinking because I try to think through things. I don't react emotionally about a lot. I'm pretty thick-skinned. I don't get insulted easy. I don't know how to train people to do that. I think it's just a natural byproduct of the fact that I just, I just don't get worked up and I, I care about people. I, I assume when people are acting out of sorts, that there's a reason for that. And I try to find that reason and I try to be a bit empathetic to that. And I try to just steer people around that and we get to kind of like a yes, uh, or a no, like Nafisa said. We as public officials have to be able to go into our C P O meetings, our neighborhood association meetings and go, look, this is why I voted the way I did. This is why I did the way I did, but it was well thought out. I understand your opinion, but this is why I did it. And next time it might be different, but like I want your feedback. I've had to do it already at my C P O for people who get pretty worked up about stuff, you know, elected officials get in there and they're just like sharks to, to bait, right? And uh, you have to be able to do that with a pretty thick skin, but you have to be able to explain your positions honestly. And I don't pander to people. I'm honest with them and I think they appreciate that.
Thank you very much. All right. We have just a few more questions and uh, then we'll do some, some wrap-up. But uh, Jeffrey, why don't we start with you? What is your plan to engage with your constituents if you are elected? Especially maybe those who are in, uh, have not been engaged politically or might be uh, outside of um, folks that you typically hear from?
Yeah, there's a lot of apathy out there for politics and, and probably rightfully so. There's a lot of negativity that comes from the political sphere and people get so tired of it, they don't want to even deal with it. You know, I, I've had a lot of people who contact me uh, through this, the course of the last year, who tell me that they really feel like their local leaders are not listening to them. They never see them ever. And I know I'm talking at formal meetings. Our C P O meetings, which I've been going to my C P O for about four to five years now. Our neighborhood association meetings in Beaverton, there's about ten of them. I've gone to several. I think that just as a, as a, as a litmus test for, for us as leaders, we need to be regularly participating in those meetings at least several times a year so that they see our face and can put a face to somebody who's working with them in the community and can answer questions and also explain to them why things are going on a certain way. You know, we were talking earlier about people that don't want to expand the U G B, but they complain about congestion, right? They want to pack everybody in, but then they complain about congestion, but they don't want to relax space. And I've had conversations with so many people where I'm like, you know, this is a bit of a paradox here, you know, and, and I try to educate people. That a lot of people don't even know what county commissioners do. Like, what is a county commissioner? And I say, well, they spend a lot of your money. It's a good idea to know what they do with it. So here's what we do. I just think it's a non-stop manner of education and you have to be available to people. I want to be available. I want to go to meetings. I want to go to C P Os, neighborhood association meetings, have my office open to folks at times and meet the public and have them feel like I'm there for them because I am. That's why I'm doing this.
Thank you. Uh, so Nafisa, what is your plan to engage with constituents if you are elected? Especially those that maybe have not been engaged before or um, come from underserved communities uh, and, and have not had the opportunity to participate as much?
Yes, you really are full of good questions, I know. Um, you know, when I decided to run for office, I said that I wanted to run a community mobilizing campaign. Two faults to that. One, this district have had the same commissioner for the past twenty years. So people have not been engaged, have not been uh, got them involved in politics or the county commissions and, and, and contribute significantly. And then the other is that, you know, by having, you know, that we, there's so many diversity that exist in this district that um, this narrative of getting rid of uh, people of color and communities of low income are not part of that conversation. So I wanted to really run a community mobilizing campaign. I've been door knocking in the primary and I've had people be so touched that I was asking their votes uh, and saying, you're really asking, you're knocking my door for my vote? And, and, and really, and I did that because I'm not the normal candidate that runs for office in Washington County. So there's a lot of grounds to cover for me to get my message out. And that's why I started early and really uh, tried to engage people. And once through the campaign trail, I was asked, what kind of county commissioner would you want to be known? Four years after you get elected? And I said that, you know, and I will repeat it. This was back, I think, probably early on in the campaign. Uh, and I'll repeat it today. I want to be known as an accessible and transparent county commissioner. And that's the county commissioner and the values that I will be pushing forward for every county commissioner to be a transparent and accessible. I want to have forums with my district. I want to be a visible uh, uh, attendee for our C P Os uh, and, and try to really ask people if there is a big development that's going in our district that is not going to have a parking lot, engage the community so that they feel they are hurt and they've been asked for permission to have this development up. Uh, now, people are not against uh, mental health services in all these districts. Uh, it's just a lack of engagement and I want to engage them.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm just going to give a shout out to the folks in the audience. If you have a question, please put it in chat. I think we have one more question here and then I have a couple of audience questions and then we'll do a wrap-up. But um, so one question, you both are obviously very well studied and you guys have a lot of experience. Uh, Nafisa, can you talk about an area you think that you differ uh, than your opponent? Or uh, you, you have a different viewpoint?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think it was pretty clear on the metro bond measure, I would say. Uh, I think um, uh, I support the metro bond because that's what I, and I, it's kind of brilliant. Um, I've been supporting that in the, uh, in the primary and really talking about uh, the, the intense work that went into to engage uh, communities that are not part of uh, normal engagement of policymaking and decision-making. So uh, uh, I think that's one area that we.
Jeffrey?
Yeah, would it be a really cheap way out for me to say, yeah, the transportation bond? Yeah, that's how we're different.
It would be fair.
It would be fair. Yeah, well, obviously that's quite clear. And you know, me and Nafisa have done a lot of these and I, I, you know, I, I think it's interesting that I, we, we have some pretty big differences of how we want to get where we want to go. But again, when you're trying to build coalitions, I think you realize that like what you want is the same, but how you go about it is different. But I think there's the devil's in the details and I do think those things matter. So I do think voters need to pay attention to that. We all want to get to the same spot, but everything that happens up to that has an impact on your community. Fiscally, with traffic, with housing, with jobs. Everything you're talking about implementing to get to a goal impacts your community for years before you even get to that goal. So I think people need to really look at both of us side by side fairly and honestly, unbiasedly. I think they're going to be able to find someone that resonates with them more, that supports their ideals more and that will be a better advocate for them. And uh, I trust them to make that decision. Unless I lose, then I think they made the wrong decision. However, uh, the political process is what it is and we have to, to fall in the mercy of people. We both have very detailed views on things. I tell people all the time, go and look at us side by side. You'll be able to pick the one you think is going to be best for you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Uh, this came in from the audience, uh, from Mr. Jim McCray. And he uh, does a lot of work around incubators. He asks, uh, what changes would you make in the county's economic development department and the plan, and its plans for the future? And I will have uh, you start that off, Jeffrey.
Yeah, well, I think I've touched on that earlier. Uh, he, the economic development department is just starting, so it's kind of in its inception. So you use the word incubator. That's an interesting question because it is really in an incubation phase right now. If you read John Southgate's report, you realize that like there's some, some things that are delineated to do. It's also meant to be a dynamic group, so they don't, but most of our big cities have economic development departments already. And there's not meant to be this cross stepping on toes of who's doing what, because that's not a good use of resources. Right now, they're kind of open to how they can serve best, but their primary goal is to serve unincorporated Washington County, which is about a third of our population. So some of the things I've projected is that I really think we need a funding stream to help support business creation, business support once they're created and to support businesses that are struggling to go out of business. And I think we need that funding stream to be doing grants and support for businesses and all, in all areas. The second one is to really, once the website gets up and going, is to try to move people from the kit, to have this be a clearinghouse. Everybody knows, go to the county and the county will kind of highlight businesses in different sectors so people can kind of know where to go to do certain things, uh, almost like a, you know, a Craigslist for business, but the county ran. And it costs practically no money, but it will help support and encourage businesses as we grow. Um, those are a couple of ideas you've had, as well as using some of the C B D money that we get, C B D G money, I'm sorry, that sounded wrong. Uh, community development block grant money uh, to use for economic development, which right now the county is philosophically opposed to. I think we need to bring back into the conversation, economic development as part of our C B D G money and perhaps use some of that funding for business development with, from that department.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Nafisa, I'll read that for you again because it's kind of a little bit long. Uh, what question, or what changes would you make in the county's economic development department? Or uh, I guess how would you start to shape it and, oh, the, its plans for the future?
I would, you know, first look into um, what the plan is and who's involved. I think that I, like I said earlier, I'm a firm believer that people who are closest to the problem are closest to the solution. So I would really want to uh, look into uh, the rules of uh, chamber commerce play in the economic development uh, plans moving forward for Washington County. Uh, you know, when I started my own business, I utilized uh, economic development entities and benefited. Uh, so I think it's important that we realize, um, uh, we look into uh, what kind of funding we're um, giving to Chamber of Commerce in Washington County throughout, uh, because they're really the ones that um, uh, provide uh, everyday support. And I think many business owners know that, uh, when you have an issue, uh, I don't think people go to county. I think they look into the Chamber of Commerce and, and, and folks that are doing economic development. Uh, the other thing I would do is, you know, try to figure out what is our intention uh, to actually provide immediate relief now to small businesses. So I would, uh, you know, those are some of the changes um, uh, that I would do as a county commissioner. Uh, you know, to really look into what um, this plan means and um, how is this plan put together? Who put it together? Uh, and what kind of, because it might be, you know, it's one thing to say we're providing support financially, but how much is that? You know, fifty cents or fifty dollars is not going to make, uh, but we need to significantly. You know, 50 cents or $50 is not going to make, but we need to significantly to be uplifting businesses. And one way to do that is really contribute and support and, and make sure fiscally they're appropriately situated, Chamber of Commerce and, and the folks that support these businesses.
Thank you very much. We have a question from Lorraine with the Beaverton Chamber. And I will start with you, Nafisa. If you were on the commission, would you have voted for the additional property tax measure that was just in front of the commissioners to provide childcare in Washington County?
Yeah, that was an interesting, I think that was a question or a topic that was actually voted down in the commission. I think three to two or some. I think for the child, I think that's the issue I'm, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that. Lorraine, correct us in the chat if we're wrong, but yes, that is correct according to Lorraine.
Perfect. Yeah, so I think that was an interesting topic and I think a lot of the conversation I heard was people weren't engaged. I think involving people and a lot of people saying that they didn't know or they weren't aware of this and had some questions of the, how the mechanics of that ordinance was put together or measure. So if I was a county commissioner and I didn't know this and what it was for and had questions and the impacts for my constituents, you know, I think we just passed two levies that were property taxes. So I would want to learn more about that and would have been, would have liked to be engaged in early on before I cast it. And at the end of the day, if it was a good idea and I understood where these tax money were going and felt comfortable and it was a good idea for my constituents, yeah, I would have voted yes too. But those are, I think, and I think this was an issue at the state level too.
Thank you very much. Jeffrey, do you need me to read that again or you got it?
No, 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 yeah, I'm aware of that, that proposal. And yeah, no, I, you know, some good points is that the, the need is there, but the, the, the tax rate was fairly high compared to what some of our tax rates are for some of our essential services that we have bond measures already for. And I think that was some of the concern was that it wasn't that it wasn't really important, but that the, the funding was too extreme compared to some of our other essential services that can't, people in the county are already paying quite a bit of money for. I think that was what some of the reservation is. Plus we have, you know, certain CARES Act money that maybe could be used for some of that. And I think there was some, some pushback at the county level of we can probably find some funding, maybe not as much funding as they were seeking, but we can find some funding for some of these things that I, I think a lot of it really had to do with after school programs, things like that nature, which are important in our communities. But I think that was what some of the fear was. And I, from what I remember, Pantry said that there was some pushback from some of the cities, mostly also because when these things come up so quickly and they're hard to draft fast, people get suspicious of how you're going to generate that money, where's it going to go, what's it actually going to be spent on? I do think people have a fair critique that they need a little more detail these days before they're going to devote on some of these things because they're being bombarded with them constantly throughout the election year, every single year. And some of those are mismanaged. And I do think we have to be careful about that, even though the focus of that was a very important one.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to do this kind of these last two together and we'll, then we'll do your wrap ups. Tell, tell us about how you feel you would fit in on the commission? And what do you think about commissioners now becoming potentially full-time employees? Jeffrey, we'll start with you.
That's a great question. A few of my commissioner buddies will probably not like me for this, but here's the thing. I agree with the move to make commissioners full-time. And I only say that, and I'm coming from a fiscally cheap standpoint, remember, I'm fiscally a cheap person. I don't like spending money where it's not needed, but here's the thing, we have the second biggest county in the entire state and in my opinion, the greatest, most important county. Doing it part-time, I think is extremely difficult. I don't, and I think that might be why some of the problems from constituents they have with some of the commissioners, they're not as accessible. If you're working 40 hours, 50 hours a week, you have an office, things of nature, we can be doing a lot of things in the community that we wouldn't normally be able to do because we also have a full-time job in addition to that. So I understand the need and I do think it's important. It connects however, to my desire to not have professional politicians in any position, which is why I'm a strong advocate of term limits. And it's one of these things I really want to put towards the county board to approve a resolution for voters to decide to put term limits on county officials, all elected officials in Washington County, because we don't need career politicians. We need people that want to get into this job for the right reasons, to do a great job, to leave it better than when they found it and then to leave and move on because we're just like everybody else. I shouldn't have a protected position forever. I don't like that. And I don't like that in government of any kind. So I support the measure, but I'd add the caveat that I think they need to show their metal by letting voters decide whether they should be in office longer than 12 years. And I think I know what the voters would say to that.
Thank you. Nafisa, how do you feel that you will fit in with the current county commission makeup? And what do you think about commissioners being full-time?
Yeah, good question. You know, I think I have a good working relationship with the current commissioners, I would say. You know, I, being a member of the Clean Water Services Advisory Commission, I get to talk and engage the commissioners through that. And so I think I would be an easy fit. And in terms of the full-time, I think this was a wrench that was thrown on us. I think we were running on a part-time position. But I do think it's, it's a nice opportunity that would really add value to Washington County tremendously. And I say that because we're one of the, you know, most diverse counties in Oregon. And I think, I think, and I might be repeating some, the, some of the stuff that people have been saying, which is that, you know, there's so much we can accomplish for our community on a part-time basis versus full-time basis. So I think adding, you know, full-time requirement, it's, I think it's realistic to match it to also other counties, what they're doing. And to make sure that, you know, we are accessible and that we're going to, our community can count on us nine to five. There is an office, there, that commissioner is supposed to be there unless they're in a meeting. And if that commissioner is not there, but it would be kind of weird that I work Tuesday to Saturday shift and I, on my Monday, I go to the county commission to voice and be engaged in what the county does. And I find out that my county commissioner works Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So I think, I think it's a good step in the right direction and I look forward to hearing what the voters say.
Thank you very much. All right, we will do a quick wrap up, just anything last minute things that you want us to remember or tell us about yourself. And we'll keep it short because we're getting close to time. So Nafisa, why don't you kick us off for the last dance?
Just closing remarks?
Yeah. Whatever you want to tell us about yourself that yet, that wasn't in one of the questions.
I just want to say thank you again for giving us this opportunity and really having these questions. I think we learned a lot from each other through this dialogue and, and also seeing the questions that people who are attending care about. So I really appreciate, I want to let everyone know to, you know, join my campaign and support me in becoming the next Washington County Commissioner. You know, I have broad support of, across the political spectrum in terms of my endorsement, politically, organizationally. So I, you know, I'm really proud that the Beaverton Chamber of Commerce endorsed me, the Realtors, as well as our elected officials in, in Washington County, prominent elected officials in, in my district as well. So I'm looking forward, I will be a great commissioner. I hope to earn your votes and support and get involved in my campaign. If I don't know anything, teach me, I'm willing to learn and to listen and really just be a value adding to our district and our county as a whole. So yeah, that's what I would say. I also been endorsed by our mayors of Hillsborough and Beaverton. So I'm really excited to, because the reality for this district is also there's a conversation around annexation that we haven't covered today, but has been in the primary. So having their support really means a lot. And yeah, we're, thank you, thanks for having me.
Thank, thank you very much. Really appreciate you stepping up to serve. Jeffrey, give us your closing remarks, anything else you feel that we should know about you as a candidate?
Yeah, just give me a quick second here. I, you know, I'd probably just say some of the stuff that Nafisa said in that I've also got a few of our, our great long-term public servants that are county commissioners who have strongly endorsed me and I'm very humbled by that. Endorsements from mayors and city councillors in Sherwood, Twelton, they do mean a lot. But at the same time, and I've said this from the very beginning, my job and what I want is to get endorsements from 600,000 people in Washington County, because those are really the people that I serve the most. And quick story, a couple, a couple of weeks before the primary, I got an alert on my phone that I'd gotten an email on my campaign account and I stay up late, I'm a night owl. So I was up about midnight and I jumped on the computer and it was from a 15-year-old kid who was a grad, who was a sophomore from Beaverton High School, my alma mater, go Beavers. And he told me that he'd saw my write-up in the, in the voter's pamphlet and he'd done some research on me and he was really moved by my work with kids. And I felt like I needed to get down and respond to him. And just as I did that, I got another alert from my campaign finance account that said he just donated $20 to my account. I tell you, I was pretty moved by it. I contacted him, he's been kind of, he's been a volunteer of mine now for about six months, super good kid. And it really resonated with me like, that's absolutely why I'm doing this and the, why I want to serve folks like that who put their hope in you. It's very humbling, a bit scary at times, but I take it very, very seriously and, and I always will. And he's one of many that I could say that about, but it's a, it's kind of a cool story about something that really solidified in my mind why I'm doing this. I won't say his name, but he knows who he is. And I'm pretty excited about that. And I, and I've had thousands of people that are voting for me and like what I, and I'm excited to have a lot of stories like that and that's why I'm here.
All right, thank you also for stepping up to, to do this. And to all of you who stuck with us, we really appreciate it. I'm going to turn it back over to the Beaverton Chamber and the HBA. Lorraine and Ezra, thank you very much for hosting.
Thank you, you did a fantastic job. Thank you for your mad debate moderation skills and for sponsoring the event as well, Northwest Natural. And to both candidates, you did a great job and we, as Naina said, we appreciate all the work you're doing and all the things you've had to do to change up the campaigning style of the current road today we're on. So thank you for being here.
Yeah, and again, just echoing Naina and Lorraine, thank you for joining us today. Thank you for stepping up to serve in what is a very consequential seat, a very consequential county in our wonderful state. We appreciate the time that both of you are taking to run as serious candidates. Please know that this video will be available on both the Beaverton Chamber of Commerce and the HBA websites. So you'll be able to view it again and share it. And thank you everyone for joining us today and have a wonderful rest of your afternoon.